Okay. All right, counsel. We're gonna go ahead and open up the work session. I am gonna turn it over to our city manager at six o'clock.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's work session is to review the city's annual audit for two thousand and twenty-three with Wall Smith and Bateman. I think since we have a few new faces, we'll start with introductions. So Jessica, if you wanna start, and then we'll just go around.
All right, well, I'm Jessica Bogner. I'm one of the audit partners at Wall Smith and Bateman.
I'm Aubrey Bagwell. I'm audit staff at Wall Smith Bateman.
She's not. She's a supervisor.
I'm Jackie, Jackie B. Hill, City Council.
Don Krebs, City Council.
Liz Henley, Mayor Pro Tem.
Ty Coleman, Mayor.
Leanne Lonsberry, Finance Director.
And unless Leanne has anything to say, I'll turn it over to Jessica. Okay.
All right. Well, as I mentioned, I'm Jessica, and we're with Wall Smith and Bateman, and we performed the city's audit. If you turn to page one, it says independent auditors report at the top. This is, this, this year, your financial statements, I don't know if you guys have looked at this prior to now. It looks different than last year, uh, because you guys had a single audit this year. I know last year it was a little different, so it was nice. We made like a slow trans, uh, or transition. Last year, you were over the seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds, but it was only ARPA that put you over. So in that case, you can do what's called an alternative compliance examination, which is what we did. Well, this year, you were well over seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we believe you were gonna stay that way. So you had a single audit. So the, again, just a lot of different types of auditing. We actually do do compliance testing, and we also give an opinion on the federal programs that were tested, where that alternative compliance examination, we did not give an opinion. We did do compliance testing, but very direct as what they said to do. So just your report keeps getting bigger and bigger. So this is one of two opinions in this report, but this is on the report of the audit of the financial statements. So in that first paragraph, it says, "We have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three." In the second paragraph, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above are fairly presented in all material respects as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three." This is what we call an unmodified opinion. This is the type of opinion that you want. The next section is the basis for our opinions, and it just says that we have followed the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. So that relates to the federal portion. And we're required to be independent of the city. So we're always here to help, but we cannot make management's decisions, and we can't do your books for you, basically. So we are independent. Management is responsible for these financial statements. So in the next few paragraphs, it talks about that management is responsible for the preparation, fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control to ensure these financial statements are fairly presented. The next page, literally that whole page, is what our responsibilities are for conducting the audit. This just goes through and says that we do exercise professional judgment. We think everybody might have committed fraud, or required to think that way. We do do what's called a risk assessment. So with that, we do not look at a hundred percent of the transactions that flow through the city. So with that being said, getting an audit doesn't mean everything is perfect. It just means that it's materially correct. So there could be errors in here and things like that. Obviously, the risk of a misstatement existing is higher if there's fraud, obviously because in management can hide things from that, us and everything like that. But we do that risk assessment based on reading your minutes, talking to department heads, going through the processes of the city, and then we test things accordingly. And then, uh, we're required to communicate to you guys if we come across any significant audit findings and certain internal control-related matters that were identified during the audit, but we do not give an opinion on your actual internal controls. The next page at the top is, there's just require, the next few, three sections, you're required to have certain information in these financial statements. Then you also have some supplementary information in these financial statements, and then the last paragraph is new. There's also other reporting that's required by the government auditing standards for being that single audit. We'll go to the basic financial statements that starts on page five, and Aubrey's gonna go through the numbers and kind of explain the different financial statements as we go through them, but please stop us if you have questions as we're going through the numbers.
Uh, so on page five, that, this is your statement of net position. This is where the city sits as a whole. The first column is your governmental activities, so all your funds, like your general fund, those kind of funds besides your business-type activities, which is water, sewer, sanitation. So in total, the city has total, uh, current assets of thirty-two million, total non-current assets of sixty-four point seven million, deferred outflows of resources of three point four million, which is just related to your pension, and then total current liabilities of five point two million. And then on the next page, total non-current liabilities of fifteen point three million for total liabilities of twenty point six million. And then you have deferred inflows of resources in total of one point three million, which includes property taxes, leases, and then also items relating to your pension, and then bringing you to a total net position of seventy-eight million.
So the reason these statement is different is this is if the city operated like your enterprise fund all the time. So it includes fixed assets. It includes debt. It includes that para liability. It includes all that, where you don't see that when you look at the city as a, a whole.
Um, and then the next page, on page seven, is your statement of activities, and this is pretty much an income statement for the city as a whole, um, not what you're used to seeing in your budget-to-actuals, not the fund presentation. It's just everything together, long-term and short-term. So you had total expenses in the governmental activities of seventeen point five million, and then total expenses in your business-type activities of four point nine million, um, and then total charges for services in the governmental funds, one point seven, and then in the business-type, five point five, and then total operating grants of two point six in non-in-business type, and then total capital grants of eight hundred thousand in your governmental funds, and then total capital grants of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand in your business-type activities. And then if you go down to the bottom, these are your general revenues. Um, that just shows taxes, miscellaneous income, investment income, and you had total general revenues in your governmental activities of sixteen point five million and total general revenues of, in business-type activities of one point one million.
So this is a really good statement to show you cannot operate without sales tax and property taxes. So we, it's a backwards income statement for you guys on purpose. It starts with your expenses, then it shows what you get for charges for services, operating grants and contributions, and capital grants contributions. That very far right column in the middle of the page shows that you would've ran the governmental funds at a deficit of twelve point four million. So you really needed the taxes of, um, the sixteen point five million to really not put you guys in the hole.
And you can see that your business-type activities support themselves. They have a net of one point three million positive. Um, then on page eight, this is just your government rental funds, your general fund, community recreation fund, streets fund, and then your other smaller funds. So this is more what you guys are used to seeing in your budget-to-actuals. So in total, you have eighteen point nine million of assets, two point seven million of liabilities, nine hundred thousand of deferred inflows, and then a total fund balance of fifteen to seventeen. And if you go down the column by fund, you have a total fund balance in the general fund of twelve point three million, a total fund balance in the community rec fund of one point three million, a total fund balance in the streets fund of one point one million, and then in your other smaller funds, a total fund balance of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Then this next page on page nine is just showing the differences between this statement and then those ones at the beginning. Then if you go to page ten, this is pretty much your income statement for your funds. So you had total revenues of twenty point eight million, total expenditures of nineteen point six million, and then your other financing sources, which are debt proceeds and lease proceeds, and then transfers between all the funds of one million. And then if you go down the page again, you can see total revenues in the general fund of fifteen million, total expenditures of thirteen, and you could go across and see how much in each fund. And then page eleven is just, again, showing the differences between there and the next page.
So your real big increase was in the general fund of one point nine million. Community rec fund increased their fund balance by two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Streets and street trust fund increased by about a hundred, and then your other funds were really close to break even. They were, uh, they decreased by four thousand dollars.
Are there any questions on those ones before we go to the, okay. Um, so then this is your statement of net position for your proprietary funds, which are your water and sewer and sanitation funds. And then this internal service fund is your, is it called the employee benefit?
Yeah, your health insurance.
Yeah. So in the enterprise fund, you had turn, total current assets of eleven point nine million, total non-current assets of thirty-one million, deferred outflows of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, total current liabilities of one point seven million, total non-current liabilities of six million, bringing you to a net position of thirty-six million. And then on page thirteen, this is your income statement for your enterprise funds. You guys had total operating revenues of five point six million, total operating expenses of four point seven million, bring you to operating income of nine hundred thousand, and then a net of non-operating revenues and expenses of two point three million, capital contributions of forty-one million.
Forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand. Yeah, that's not that high. Um, and then bring you to a change in net position of two point four million, and then bring your total net position from thirty-three million to thirty-six million at the end of the year.
Your employee benefit fund was pretty close to breakeven last year, and that's where you want to be.
Um, and then page fourteen is a statement of cash flows for your proprietary funds. So this just shows how cash flowed in and out of your enterprise funds throughout the year.
Uh, page sixteen starts the notes to the financial statements. So those, those are a lot of big numbers, and they're summarized. So the detail can be found back here, specifically for your cash, fixed assets, debt, para, if you cared. Leases, that was the big new standard last year. Um, you did have to implement a new standard this year, which is similar to leases, but it was for subscription-based information technology agreements. We didn't talk about it at the beginning because we ended up not having to record anything, but again, um, it's just a lot of work for your IT department this year. They got the brunt of what Leanne got last year with leases, trying to, um, obtain, but, sorry, the dog looked like it did not have an owner. Trying to get us all those agreements to see what, what needs to be included in these financial statements. So it's just one more thing to add to everybody's plate that was already full. So that's in here, talks about that you guys did adopt that, that new standard, cuz you're required to. I won't really go through the notes. There were no violations of, um, over budget, so state statute. So we won't go through any of the budget-to-actual statements either. We, we did have the one that was gonna be over budget, and you did a budget amendment late, so we will talk about that as a possible issue, but again, no actual violations of state statute. So let's do a big jump, actually. Let's jump to page. Oh my gosh, you guys have giant financial statements. Okay, let's jump to page eighty-six. So you guys haven't seen it in this format, like I said, because you guys haven't been a single audit. I think last year you were like at eight hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds. This year, you're at one point eight million. So this, this shows you where all your federal funds were that were actually expended during the year. So even if you get all that money, such as the ARPA money upfront, you don't report it until you have expended it. So these are the expenditures. Based on this, uh, we have to do a certain percentage of testing. The city is high risk. The reason the city is high risk is because you haven't had a single audit for two years, right? So that's number one. Have you had a single audit in the last two years? If that's no, you're high risk automatically. So with that, you have to test forty percent of these federal funds. If you go to low risk, so after this year, after next year, the first box is checked, you've had two years. Then the next box, it says, "No material weaknesses," or "No findings of question costs," so no federal findings of any kind, and then "No material weaknesses on your financial statements." So once that, we can drop it to twenty percent. Um, you guys do have some big federal grants in process slash hopefully starting. Um, so I do think you will continue to be on this, this track for a while, at least the next two to three years, I would assume. So the next few pages, again, are our letters. So this is the, as I mentioned, the one opinion. This is just a letter on your internal controls for, um, in relation to government auditing standards. And then the next letter is the independent audit re, report, so an opinion, but on the compliance of the uniform guidance. So we're not gonna read through those, but that, that second opinion is basically the exact same, just saying what major programs were tested. So this is the best page. If you go to page ninety-three. So this is what we call the summary of auditor's results. Um, so the first one says, okay, what kind of auditor's report was issued on your financial statements? And as I mentioned, it is unmodified. Then the next, it talks about what was the internal control findings over financial reporting? Did we identify any material weaknesses? We did not. We did identify a significance deficiency that we do not consider to be material, but then was there any non-compliance material to financial statements noted? And that was no. So your non-compliance is gonna be budget overages, uh, any violations of state statute for the financial statements side. The next section is for your federal awards and inter, internal control findings over major programs. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and the auditor's report issued on compliance for major programs was unmodified. So we do not have any findings that need to be disclosed under the uniform guidance. The federal programs that were tested was the CB, CDBG grant, so the Community Development Block Grant, which is just a pass-through to the housing. And then the other major program was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, so your ARPA money. And then, again, do you guys qualify as low risk? Was a no. So the next page, page ninety-four, this is the internal control over financial reporting, and we do have to show it as a repeat finding from last year because we did have a similar finding. But the one thing is, is that last year it was a material weakness. This year, it's a significant deficiency. So we did see some great improvement. Also, that happens with turn, transitions, you know, like, uh, the transition in the finance, and also the, the new standard last year was, was a big deal. But this year, uh, we do just consider it a significant deficiency. So we still see some room for improvement with some of those non-routine transactions, but I truly believe most of this came from Leanne getting familiar with your books. Some of the adjustments she made, she was making them thinking it was one thing, but it was like another thing. We had some debt proceeds that need to be recorded. Those are non-routine transactions. That's not something you enter into all the time. So again, it was just getting familiar. So again, I think this is great steps in the right direction. So let's just continue to strengthen those internal controls, more like I just think it's like a familiarity thing for Leanne. I think once, one more year, she, this next year will be great. Any questions on the findings?
I have a question if you all don't have a question yet, but on page, um, I think it's eighty-six, when you mentioned that, um, the testing requires forty percent of the fed fund, if you can just give us a little short example what testing involves?
Sure. So in the compliance supplement, so that's what the feds put out of every single one of these. They have what you're gonna do. There's a possibility of like thirteen categories to test. They can't pick more than six, thank goodness, right? So one, always, 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 is allowable costs and cost principles. So did you spend the money on what the grant says you can spend it on? So we do a sample, and we say like, okay, they bought a new vehicle or whatever. Well, in this case, this, the pass-through grant, they pass it through to do this specific project. Did they do that specific project? We're gonna use this one because we did have a slight issue. The next one is like reporting, so to speak. So reporting, what financial reports were required to be submitted? Did you submit them? Were they accurate, and were they on time? That would result in a finding if you didn't. The next one is procurement dispersments and dispar, or department. So when you spend the federal money, it has to be with a contractor that's approved to be used by federal funds. So Leanne would look up on sam.gov that this contractor is allowable for us to enter into this contract, and make sure you document this stuff. So that's where the key is. You can look, but you can't, I can't believe you when you tell me you look. I want to, but I can't. So that, other things that come with that is if you're spending the federal money on, uh, salaries, Davis Bacon Law applies. So were you paying them proper wage rates? Did you have, you have to have this stinking little logo on all your PACE schedules that you approve? It's just things like that. In your contract, you have to buy from American companies. You have to say that, like, when you get the bid back from the contractor that you're gonna buy American-made products. So all of those things are things we have to look at based on what major program we tested. They will say ARPA is the least strict at this point. They started out pretty heavy, and then last year they came in in April and said, anybody under ten million, I don't care what you do. You can recognize it as revenue loss, and we just have to make sure you filed your reports, and then that your expenses. There are still a few expenses, but you can't buy booze. Nobody ever buy booze with federal money, okay? We'll have to write you up, and you have to pay it back. Those, those are some examples.
Thank you so much for that. That clarifies that. I appreciate it.
It's not fun for us or your staff. So I'd love that you guys have not been a single audit. But yes, um, it's good to know that you, you went through this, though, with no findings. I think that's like a good accomplishment for your staff. Uh, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. We ask for a lot of stuff.
Well, and I'm not sure if you were gonna share this, but I think one of the more major items, especially from a pass-through perspective, is a lot of times when they would have questions, we were able to contact our partners and get a majority of that documentation, but in all honesty, we should've had that documentation to begin with. And so I think being more on top of it, having staff talk through whose responsibility is gonna be what, that kind of stuff, and, and just applying for and trying to manage nineteen million dollars was a pretty significant haul. So, um, I think, you know, tightening up some of those areas as well, and, you know, so Deacon knows he looked up to see if, on Sam, if the person, you know, could do business, but he didn't do a screenshot. So it's just that kind of stuff from a documentation perspective.
The one she's mentioning is subrecipient monitoring. That's one of those columns that the feds can say, like, if you pass this money through, you have to know exactly what they're spending on it, spending it on, and that you're monitoring to make sure they're doing it correctly. Cuz in the end of the day, you're responsible.
That's very interesting. Thank you so much for sharing that. Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Any comments?
So because you are required to be a single audit, uh, one of the other things you have to do is create a corrective action plan. So management has created what they're gonna do to make sure that we don't have findings next year that you could read through, or, uh, Leanne can go through. Um, again, wasn't like you had like a lot of problems, so the corrective action plan is pretty minimal, um, which is, it's appropriate. Uh, you will get a letter. Wait, no, you're not a county. One of the count, like, some of the entities we have to send this to, they'll come back and say whether or not they accept your corrective action plan, but that's for counties and other entities, not a town, so never mind. But you could get something.
So with this action plan right here, um, do you have to review, uh, the steps over the next twelve months?
So when we come back to audit, we'll look at this specifically and say like, okay, did you do what you were gonna say? And then we have to report whether or not you've implemented it. And that'll be in here going forward.
Going forward, okay.
So we just have one more letter, and it should be slid in, has a date at the top. This is what we call the governance letter. Um, it's just a required written communication between us as your auditors and you as city council. It talks about, oh, again, what we have to do, and a lot of what was referenced in that engagement letter that you guys signed. Talks about, um, some of the accounting practices. So it, it says you adopted that SBITA, so the subscription-based information technology agreement. But the one big section is the accounting estimates. Because you guys are a part of para and FPPA, it just tells you basically you can have some huge swings in these financial statements from year to year because these are significant estimates. Also, management does estimate the lives of capital assets and like depreciating those. Um, we do look at those for reasonableness. Those shouldn't change much to, for your financial statements. And the employee benefit fund, um, you incur what's called an IBNR, so your, uh, claims that were, um, filed, so to speak, in the following year, but were for the previous year. That's an estimate. One of those could jump up and come out and bite us, I guess, but it shouldn't be material. We, we do subsequent review to try to see how much really does come through. But, I mean, if you went to this hospital, you might get the bill in seven months. Who knows? We didn't go that far. If we had any difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we would disclose that to you here. We did not. We, your staff was great. They got us everything we needed, and this year we needed a lot more, and it also kind of, I mean, a lot of the burden was still on Leanne, but some of the other departments were more involved this year than they have been in the past with the pass-through funny, pass-through money going through, like, the Public Works Department, the IT got drug in with SBITA. Sometimes we get the Police Department involved in some of their grants. We didn't as much this year, but I think it was good for some other departments to see that we really can't be pesky, so answer us. We did have a few audit adjustments, as well as past audit adjustments that were required to provide to you. Those are attached to this letter. And if we had any disagreements with management on some of those findings or audit adjustments, we would also disclose that with you here, but like I said, everybody's really easy to work with. We appreciate working with your staff. Um, so that's good. So we do have, on page three, just two more. Sometimes when we find things that maybe aren't just quite as good as they could be, we don't think they're a significant deficiency or material weakness, so they don't go in the actual findings, but we do wanna communicate with them. They're enough to warrant your guys' attention. So the budget resolution, obviously you guys are aware of that, that, that supplemental was approved in June for two thousand and twenty-four, for the December two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year budget, but it was only for the employee benefit. But it was only for the employee benefun- fund. Normally, we'd really get. It strict with you guys saying like, you can't really manage. The financials if you're looking so far out and then coming back six months later to make this change, but because it was. Employee benefit fund, because it was claims that were done like later, you know, those are harder to guess. We're, we're just kinda leaving it like this. But if it was like in your general fund. I probably wouldn't have left it here. It would have been an actual finding, cause again, you really use those budgets to monitor. The financial activity of the city and so, um. We're good with it here.
And again, this is something I shared when you guys did it was just a matter of, of Leanne and I not connecting. Leanne not realizing we can do budget adjustments in January, um, and me not realizing we needed but a, a budget adjustment, so. She's not going anywhere, so we won't have that anymore.
And then for the grants, um, during the audit, we noted that grant funds of about three hundred thousand had not been received as of the audit date. In addition, thirty thousand of grant expenditures were overrequested. And uh, we just recommend the city improve policies and procedures to standardize grant reimbursement requests. To ensure they're being done accurately, consistently and timely. This will reduce the time city funds are tied up in grant projects. So really, you just wanna make sure we have a process that we're. Filing these reimbursement requests cl- as close to your end as possible. We understand like some of those late. Um, payables, things like that, but you wanna be close, um, especially when they're, they're bigger dollars, um. And then just making sure we don't duplicate requests. That's it for us. Aubrey, got anything to add?
So counsel, open it up for comments and, um. Okay, I'll start with you, counselor, uh, counselor Hensley, if you would like to make any comments or did you, no, you're good. I'll do the thumbs up if y'all okay, okay?
Thank you.
And yes, Ms. Sanchez.
O- once we're done with this, ju- just as a reminder, cause we haven't done it very often. On the work sessions, if we have time, we wanted to open it up if there is any public comment. So once, we don't have anyone here, let me know if we're done with questions and we can see if there's anyone on Zoom.
Okay, let me finish up my thumbs up real quick. Everybody's okay? And uh, thank you, uh, Jessica and Aubrey for sha- sharing this information with us. Very helpful, very thorough. Um, I'm just curious, I, how much time do you all spend into doing the audit night? Because seems like it's like days, but I don't know.
Three hundred and sixty-seven audit art hours.
Goodness gracious.
For yours.
That's.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. And the reason I, I wanted to bring it up is because I know we have new council members here and I want them to know that it, this is really a real detail. Task that they have to go through and whenever we come out like we are right now, looks like everything is looking, uh, rosy. Uh, it's a good testament to our city manager as well as to Leanne and her team and what they have to do and. It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work and financial backing and just confirmation, there's a lot of work that goes into. Running a city and I always like to just point that out to everyone and then to let our team know how much we greatly appreciate what you all do. So thank you. You're welcome. So what I'll do now is I'll open up the, um. Comment section, uh, for people who are on Zoom. If you would like to make any comments at this time, please raise your hand. Uh, we do have Ms. Martinez here to give. Uh, can we tell them how to raise their hand? I could, I could tell them. You wanna tell me? Okay, if you would please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and we will recognize you and allow you to say something. Do you all see any hands raised? Okay, we don't see any hands raised. Alright, so I'll bring it back to counsel and bring it back to, um, Ms. Sanchez.
No, I just, I just wanna thank Wallsmith and Bateman for doing the audit and, um. Really explaining areas that we can do better and, and those types of things, because I think. Having a learning organization, you need to have that and, and knowing where we can tighten up and, and all of that. But then also what you said, you know, especially from a grant perspective. It was an enormous amount of pieces that were moving and wheels turning and, um, Leanne got thrown into all of that. Um, but then also then department heads making sure they're doing what they need to be doing as well. And, and so it does take a full team. To make sure the pieces are coming together.
Yes.
But you have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, I don't, I know there's something, but I don't remember exactly. So. Isn't, is there a limit to how many years Wallsmith and Bateman can do the audit? Like, is, how does that work? I, I apologize.
There is no limit. Oh, so back in like before I even started, so, oh, I don't wanna say that word out loud, but like fifteen years, sixteen years ago. There used to be. Five years, but it was five years with a partner rotation. The A S C P A came out, I don't even know how long, probably like twenty years ago, and said, that, that's not the case. Um, one, they found that you lose a lot of efficiencies in changing auditors. Um, two, they, um. They felt that the people that were getting in bed with each other for like the Enron, things like that. Changing firms necessarily would not, or partners wouldn't have proven in some of that stuff. So, here's what we do. Um, s- so the state still kinda sticks to that. Um, they have partner rotation every five years, um, for audits. We don't find that as effective. Um, what we like are for the Aubreys. And the Kellyns to change every once in a while. They're the ones doing the work. They're the ones gonna find the problem. So sometimes if you want new eyes in like that level, we have found that to be more beneficial in the catching like. Why did you do this like this last year? Or. They look at it in a different perspective, cause not everybody's the same. So when they're doing the work, they may pick different things to test. Um, cause there's no like strict guideline, you have to pick these exact ones every time, right? When you have a sample of a thousand. They may only have to pick five. There's different perspective, um. So tho- those are the things that we have found to be more effective is the person doing the actual for, fieldwork, so that's. This year it was Aubrey, Kellie and Tab. Um, Kellie has been doing it for a few years. Aubrey is kinda taking more of that role though. Like I said, she's supervisor, but she's gonna be sort of more moving into the role. After she has this beautiful baby of a manager of the audit is what we would like to see. And then you'll, she'll bring in somebody else who does a lot more of the work.
I just, I did, I, it was more honestly curiosity.
So yeah, it used to be a standard. I know some people, like when they go to, what's the commissioners meeting called? C T S I, when they all get together and stuff, they'll talk about auditor rot- rotation. Um, everybody's curious, like what are the rules? But, I mean, not you guys, but we've been doing some of our. For-profit financial statements. Or like Carla's been there like thirty-five years and I think she's been doing them since the day she started, to be honest, like. We have not left. And again, there's no requirements.
I just also, I, I thought of this kind of in the middle of the meeting and then forgot. From a risk perspective and, and as Jessica talked, the, an audit's. Never necessarily, well, not never, it's hard for an audit to catch intentional misconduct from employees. And I think we learned that the hard way. Um, so we are still continuing our quarterly reconciliation with a outside. It's Lisa, so she obviously knows the system and, and all of that and, and kinda where to look and all that. Um, because we are small and to offer that extra layer of protection and, and eyes on our expenses. And so she di- is still reviewing those from a quarterly perspective and submitting the, that information to myself and Leanne.
And I do think that's like a really good thing to have. Cause you guys are a small department for the amount of dollars that run through the city.
And could, could you share with us some of the consequences of negative findings of, to how it really can imp- have a negative impact on the city? When it comes to different grant opportunities or other funding. I just want everyone to understand why what. Our staff is doing is so important.
So this will get submitted to the federal audit clearinghouse, so this will go to the feds now. That hasn't happened before. So they do review it. They will send like a letter eventually, who knows when now. Um, but saying that they've like reviewed it type thing and then, uh, looked at it. Where this could catch you and. If you have question costs. So if you have findings over federal money, there's a really good chance they come audit you. Um, paying the money back is a big one. Uh, then. That could reduce your chances of getting more federal funds in the future, specifically the amount of funding that they push out. Um, in specific grants, uh, which is what you guys are doing now, like the L A. T C F, you guys didn't get much of that, but the ARPA, things like that, that just went out on a. A person like your prorata, per person, per pupil. Um, but that's where it would get you, um, is if you had findings of questionable costs in your federal funds.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, that happened at one of a local place and then the state came in. And did an audit, everybody got fired, basically, and then they had to pay money back. Cause they felt that it was fraudulent.
Hmm, okay.
And I do think some of the grants we apply for do ask if we've had a finding or something like that as part of the grant application. So, um, that, that's another area that it can catch you.
Right. Thank you, thank you. Well, doesn't look like, uh, we have any additional questions, uh, Jessica. Once again, it's always a pleasure to see you. And, and uh, thank you so very much for all the work and energy that you and your team put into. Uh, this audit and, um, looking forward to seeing you all again.
We do see you kind of often, but here, we'll see you in like a year. Um, you guys, if you guys wanted to accept this tonight. We'll get it submitted to the state auditor and then this year we'll have the different process with the federal audit clearinghouse.
So you guys usually don't vote on it, so is there anyone not comfortable accepting the audit?
I think we all, you have a consensus here, so we're good to go. Alright, thank you, thank you, take care.